Well, good morning and welcome to City Hall this morning. We're going to get started this morning with the invocation from Pastor Ben Glover from Oakhurst Church of Christ. Would everybody please stand? Be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'll ask Councilman Skip Kelly to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everybody please bow your heads.
Before we begin in prayer, Vice Mayor Walters and Councilmen, appreciate you so much for inviting me here, your gracious invitation. I want you to know as a fourth-generation Oklahoman that my father, a naval man, my grandfather, an Oklahoma State Penitentiary Guard, and my great-grandmother, a full-blood Cherokee, it's an honor to come here and do this this morning. Also, as a minister, I want you to know that my faith leads me to two things. One is to pray for those in authority, which we'll do momentarily, and to give honor to whom honor is due. I want you to know as someone who's lived in this state 30 years, watching the city and what you've done with it has been a tremendous thing. It has given us great hope and great encouragement for those of us who live on the South Side, and I appreciate very much what you do and would now like to ask God to bless this meeting and what you do. Would you bow with me? Fathers, we come before you this morning. Our prayer is that you would put your hands of blessing and protection around these good folks because of their public service, because of their leadership, because of their vision. While many areas of our country have struggled, this little corner of it has done fairly well. It's been well documented and well-known. But Father, that does not come without a cost, so we ask that you put your hands of protection around them as well, be with them and be with their families. Thank you, Father, for all the folks who come to share in these meetings. I know there are times when folks are standing here and need to say the tough things that need to be heard, but also, Father, today, in this moment, help them to know that they're honored, that they're appreciated for what they do, for the service that they render. So protect them, protect their families. And Father, thank you for the good that they have done. Folks that I work with, people that I minister with, get to live in this city, and there are many things that are so good about what is going on, so healthy, so right. And Father, I ask that you also continue to be with them and open their eyes. There are more needs. As good as we are, there are things to be done. Father, there are needs in this city that will be met, and I pray that you'll be with those who work in our inner cities, that work with folks who are homeless, who are hungry. I pray that you will continue to work with this council as they meet the needs of children who go to bed tonight hungry, who cannot read, and I know that is on their hearts and in their minds, and as they meet and as they plan, as they put their strategy into effect. I pray that you'll bless this city, that it will continue to be a wonderful icon of hope, a wonderful place of opportunity. There is so much good in this city, so much to be proud of, and yet there's more to be done, and that's why they're meeting today. So, Father, bless this meeting. Thank you for these good folks who serve. Bless them richly and deeply, and be with them in all they do today, that it may turn out to the good of those who live here in Oklahoma. Bless them and protect them, Father. Be with them. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
We'll call the meeting to order. Item three from Office of the Mayor, there's two appointments. Take a motion. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Also, I'd like to move up item six I. It's the item recognizing the Paseo, and I would like to ask Councilman Sam Bowman if he would join me in recognizing the Paseo.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Walters. As our minister said in prayer time this morning, there are many good things going on in Oklahoma City at this time, and we're recognizing one of those good things in Oklahoma City, the recognition of Paseo this morning. I'm going to ask, you know, when we recognize our state champions, football, track state champions, we bring the whole team up, so I'm going to ask if the Paseo team would all come forward. Just gather around. I hope, as you came in this morning, you noticed on the refreshment table a wonderful pictorial...
Jerry, come up.
Come up, stand up here with this group. I wasn't going to single Jerry Gilbert out, but former Councilman Jerry Gilbert. Jerry, welcome back to City Hall. Jerry and Councilman White served together for a number of years, and Jerry was instrumental not only in the early startup of Paseo, but much of the work in our old inner-city neighborhoods. You know, he was the one that told me many years ago, neighborhoods just don't fall apart and decline in a couple of years. It's a process of 20, 30 years of decline, and they don't turn around in two or three years either. It's a similar process in revitalizing and rebuilding, 20, 30-year process, and that's evident in the work in Paseo. It hasn't just been these last couple of years. But I hope as you walk by the table this morning, you notice that pictorial street scene of Paseo. For those of you that have been to Charleston, South Carolina, there's a symbol there called Rainbow Row, and I couldn't help when I first saw Lackmire's story and picture of Paseo, a little thought about how cities are recognized. You know, this award, the first, as you're going to hear in the proclamation, the first in the history of the National Association, American Planning Association, for not just Oklahoma City, but the state of Oklahoma. We're in some tall cotton. I mean, this same year, Boston Commons was recognized, Denver's Low Doe, and Frank Lloyd Wright Neighborhood in Illinois, in just 10 projects, including Oklahoma City. And with all the recognition, due recognition, and due Paseo, it goes to say that this is a time about Oklahoma City as well. It's a special, a very special time for Oklahoma City, every bit as much a part of the recognition of this Paseo Award as the neighborhood itself. So I'm going to ask if we could ask the clerk to read our resolution, please.
Whereas the Spanish Village Historic District on the Paseo was established by G.A. Nichols in the earliest 20th century and was listed on the National Register of Historic Places in 1983, and whereas the Paseo Neighborhood Historic District was established in the early 20th century and was listed on the National Register of Historic Places in 2004, whereas each year since 2007, the American Planning Association, an independent, not-for-profit educational organization that provides leadership in the development of vital communities, has awarded Great Places in America designations. Whereas the APA Great Places exemplify exceptional character and highlight the role planners in planning play in creating communities of lasting value. The APA has designated the Paseo a great neighborhood for 2010 by distinguishing itself in unique sense of place, engaged citizens, organizations, planning, revitalization, and artist bent. Whereas unique sense of place is shown in two separate listings on National Register of Historic Places, and whereas engaged citizens, organizations is shown through the efforts of the Paseo Neighborhood Association, the Paseo Arts Association, Positively Paseo, the Paseo Arts District, and other supporting property owners in the Paseo. Whereas planning revitalization is shown through the efforts of Positively Paseo in rehabilitating and constructing new housing in the Paseo. Whereas artist bent is evident in the numerous art galleries along the Paseo, through the many artists that live and work in the Paseo, and through the yearly Paseo Arts Festival. And now, therefore, it is resolved by the council of the City of Oklahoma City that they do commend the Paseo Arts Association, the Paseo Neighborhood Association, and Positively Paseo for their continuing support of the Paseo and revitalizing the neighborhood so that it may be designated an American Planning Association Great Places in America, Great Neighborhood for 2010.
We show our appreciation. Russell Klaus with our Planning Department, head of our Planning Department. In that this award was made by the National Association, American Planners Association, there are a few additional comments that just speak to the importance and significance of this award that I've asked Russell if he would make, please.
I'm in a dual capacity here this morning. I'm representing the American Planning Association and Bruce Knight, who was the president of the American Planning Association, and his Board of Directors, as well as the American Institute of Certified Planists. As Councilman Bowman had indicated, this is a significant honor for us. It's the first award of this kind in Oklahoma. We hope that there will be many more, but I think the Paseo is definitely the worthy recipient of the first such award. It's a program that the American Planning Association has had in place since 2007 now, but, and they have awarded in three different categories to 110 different communities or public places or great streets around the country, and we are certainly honored and very appreciative of what the Paseo has done in order to be able to get us to this position. This was not something that we applied for, anybody in the community applied for. This was the American Planning Association, who looks around the country for shining examples that demonstrate quality of planning, quality of community, and quality of people, and the Paseo rose to the top of that list, and it really, it's a great honor for everybody who's been involved in that. And then, in a second capacity, I'd like to recognize the efforts of the partnership that the Planning Department has formed with the Paseo over a number of years, past and present employees, and we continue that relationship, and we hope that it continues into the future because, as the councilman had said, it's not an overnight success. It does take several decades. It takes decades to go down. There was a vision for the Paseo in the 1920s when it was first constructed. That was lost over the years, but it has been recaptured, and I think that the Paseo was probably better and brighter than it's ever been, and I really think it's just the beginning of its renaissance as well, so we hope that that continues. I'd also like to thank the City Council for their support, for the numerous initiatives that have been carried through council over the years in support of various improvements to the Paseo, and we expect that those will probably continue, but we've had a lot in recent times, and I think we're in pretty good shape right now, but we never know what the future beholds. So in terms of the APA recognition here, it is through the Great Places in America Program that the American Planning Association recognizes and celebrates places that have special social, cultural, and historical character, that have a true sense of place, that demonstrate community involvement, good planning and plan implementation, and a vision for the future. Since the program's inception in 2007, as I said, APA has designated 110 great places, and as Councilman Bowman had indicated, we're in very good company in terms of what you have this year. You really can't plan a place like the Paseo. You can only work towards creating a good foundation for what can become a good community. But in the end, it comes down to the people and the community who get involved in their community and create that special place, and that is evidenced today by your presence and your efforts over the recent years. How did we get here? In 1987, this began a long time ago, and I know that John Belt was involved very early on in acquiring a number of properties and renovating them, and people probably thought he was crazy at the time, and I know some people still do, John, but I think the results speak for themselves. In 1987, we selected the Paseo for a pilot redevelopment program, and we initiated the neighborhood planning process that led to the Paseo Plan, which was then incorporated into the Oklahoma City Plan, the comprehensive plan at that point in time. We followed that up with the historic overlay district in 1991, and we've done some recent modifications to that, and the Paseo was unique in that it was the only historic district that included both the commercial and residential components, and it's still unique in that respect. I think it set the, I think, a model for how we want to move forward as we look at other residential and their partner commercial districts. The American Planning Association selected the Paseo as a great neighborhood for three qualities that stood out amongst the numerous neighborhoods that they reviewed. First, the Paseo demonstrates a strong and unique sense of place, and I think it would be very hard to argue that with the Spanish Village commercial component there, the art galleries, restaurants, and shops, and then the numerous bungalows that comprise the larger Paseo neighborhood. Many of those have now been restored, and many of the people in this room have contributed to that. I think everybody would recognize the Paseo is one of the more architecturally diverse areas in the city, and probably in comparison, which is why it has received this award today in the country. You don't often get that, the mix that we have there, and the attractiveness of that is a very unusual circumstance, I think, anywhere, and as we continue to develop in a more homogeneous manner, it's these unique districts of character that really help to define a city and a community, and we cannot lose sight of the importance of that. The second important element in the American Planning Association's consideration was the availability of affordable housing, and it's that access to affordable housing, to my mind, that has enabled creative people to live in the Paseo and enabled them to be able to create the community we have today. And since 1991, Positively Paseo, one of the recipients today, has been an important partner in that. I know many have been involved in the construction of affordable housing, but Positively Paseo, through its use of both public and private funds and the construction of a number of homes in the area, has really helped to stabilize that community around the central commercial district. And then the third element of a great neighborhood is its people, and that's what we have here today, and that's who we're primarily recognizing, is the efforts of neighborhood residences, residents, local businesses, and nonprofit organizations that make the Paseo the attractive and vibrant place that we see it to be today. Great neighborhoods don't become great on their own. They come about because community leaders and residents care about the places where citizens work and live. They care enough to get involved and do the things that need to be done to make neighborhoods great. That takes a lot of hard work. It takes bold moves. It takes gambles, squabbles from time to time, and it takes perseverance in maintaining that vision, and again, that is evidenced here today. The Paseo could not be what it is today without its inherited legacy of artistic endeavor and appreciation, those people, and the collective vision. So with that, the American Planning Association is pleased to be able to recognize the Paseo as a 2010 great neighborhood.
We actually do need a vote on this, so make a motion, too. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously.
Vice Mayor, I think it's significant in the fact that Russell mentioned the three elements that comprised this award, that they also sent to Oklahoma City, three individual certificates, and we're going to present those certificates, and then we have one Paseo spokesperson to respond. From Paseo Art Association, Karen Orr. Positively Paseo. And the Paseo Neighborhood Association. Thank you all. And John Belt, you've got a word of conclusion for us.
Thanks, Sam. Well, all I have to say is that it's been a long and wonderful experience for us so far. As I've said before, it's really just beginning. The first Paseo Arts Festival was in 1977, and the Paseo Neighborhood Association was really created from a group of platted areas that had no central focus, and that was done in 1978. Positively Paseo was created in 1991 and has been rebuilding houses in the neighborhood ever since, over 20 houses, and encouraging the redevelopment of other homes, and it's taken the collaboration of all of these factors, the artists of the street, residents within the neighborhood, those people who work with Positively Paseo have the ability to bring about change through construction of new homes when necessary, redoing old homes as they are necessary, and as you can tell just by looking at them, it's a wonderful bunch of people. I wish I could have said everything that Klaus said, but I'm not that good. And, but he did say one thing that I really want to repeat, and that is that all of these accomplishments that we've had over the years could not have been done without the firm support, collaboration with the City of Oklahoma City's Planning Department and the leadership, and we want to thank them in a major way for all of that help over the past 34 years and what's going to come in the future, because we know they aren't going to give us audits. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John Belt. Thank you, Paseo team. It's a great day for Oklahoma City.
I did want to take an opportunity. It was brought to my attention that one of the members of the group is Michi Susan. She's still in the audience, and she's actually receiving the Governor's Arts Award tomorrow, and so I wanted to applaud her for that. Thank you. Next item is item four, Journal of Council Proceedings. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Item five, Request for Uncontested Continuances.
Mr. Vice Mayor, a couple this morning. On page five, under the Consent Docket, the Consent Docket, number item six M, it's an amendment number two for Check Call Road, and there's also going to be a companion change order, so we'd ask that that be stricken, and we'll bring that back as a combined item on November 23rd. So we want to strike item six M on page five, and then on page 14, under item eight E1, the rapid structures, eight E1, page 14, item B, 3209 Northeast 14th Street. We ask that that be stricken. The owner has removed.
We will recess the council meeting and convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority, excuse me. There are four items.
May I ask a question? On the MFAA, it lists a whole bunch of facilities that are going to be considered in a master plan, be built out at our central maintenance facility, and I wonder, are these going to be considered individually when they come to the council, or will you vote on it as a total package?
As a part of the master plan, you'll be able to take a look at each of the projects.
Okay, so as, like, for instance, the...
This is a consultant's question at this point in time.
At this point in time, I mean, we don't have to worry about the buildings or the projects themselves.
That's correct.
And at some point in time, we'll have an opportunity to vote on these projects individually. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Now, are these facilities, are they duplicating existing facilities? Are we conducting all these services currently out of other areas?
Yeah, this is not adding additional tasks to the city, actually combining some. And actually, one that's not actually with the city that we're taking a look at for that facility is the Emsa Maintenance Facility, which would be a separate item to consider as we go forward.
If we go forward with the Emsa service, that's a good one, because I had a question on that one. Would we abandon the one we have in Midtown then?
They lease that property at that point in time, so that facility would no longer be leased a facility, and they would actually be leasing it from the city if we choose to go in that direction.
If we choose to go in that direction, do you have a feel for the timing?
I don't at this point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. We'll adjourn OCMPA, convene as the Oklahoma City Public Property Authority. There are three items. Cast your votes. Passes unanimously. We will adjourn OCPPA, reconvene as a council meeting, and this is the Consent Docket. Are there any individual considerations? Sam, we're on the Consent Docket. Do you have anything, individual considerations? Gary, you want to start with that?
Just a quick question. I assume this is the old fire station?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Is the fire department out of it completely and has no further use for it?
Well, that's the one that had some fire damage earlier in the year, and they are not in there, and they anticipate moving to the new Bricktown Station, so we chose not to repair that station at that point in time. It's a unique property. The land was urban renewal, I believe. It was built with bond dollars, so the dollars that come back will be designated as fire bond dollars, and for that purpose, we'll go back into...
That was my next question. Doing this through urban renewal doesn't change that stream of money coming back in.
Actually, they're going to donate the property. Well, the appraisal is for the building itself, and that building itself, which was constructed with bond dollars, that's what the appraisal amount comes. They'll come back to the city and be used for fire purposes in the future.
Are there any other individual considerations? Hold on just a second. Chief?
I'd ask you to confirm that, but you didn't hear it. I'm sorry. Since we opened up or relocated Station Four to the far northeast part of the city, the crews that were at Station Six are now occupying Station Four, so we have no further use for the building, and they should be in their new station in April or so next year.
Megan and Skip.
I just had two quick corrections maybe for the clerk, and one goes back to the item A on the PPA. This is the seat replacement in the Norah Arena, and that is, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Seat replacement in the Norah Arena, it was shown as Ward Seven, and that should be Ward Six. And on item six Q is an amendment for some, a contract for engineering services at Northwest 16th and May Avenue, and that's listed as Ward Two, and that also should be in Ward Six.
Correct again.
Skip?
I think what I was going to point out was on the PPA, Fairgrounds Project, listed as Ward Seven, it would be Ward Six.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Are there any other individual considerations on the Consent Docket? I'll entertain a motion. Oh, we haven't, okay. Cast your votes, and pass unanimously. Next item is the Concurrent Docket. I'll entertain a motion. Is there any individual considerations on the Concurrent Docket? Seeing none, cast your votes, and pass unanimously.
Here, on Item 8A, I had, when I looked at it, as I promised everybody I would do, or the Protestants and the applicant, I'm convinced it's going to need a SPUD. So I want to ask that we continue it two weeks and give them an opportunity to take a look at a SPUD. It backs up the residential property, and I think they could just do a better job than just straight zoning. Ap applicants indicate he can do that in two weeks. I'm going to, I'm not going to hold my breath, but it sounds like a power order in two weeks.
SPD requires new notice, so we'd have to...
Yeah. Well, tell me how long I need to continue it for then.
You probably should refer it back to Planning Commission and go through that entire process.
That's my motion.
Motion on the second. Cast your votes. I mean, motion on the continuance. Cast your votes, and it passes unanimously. Item 8B is a Ward 5 item. This is an item that I had last week requested a deferral, so I could take another look at it. There are going to be a series of pictures to try to give a visual as to what's going on out there. Staff actually recommended originally that this be closed, and it came from Planning as a, they rejected the application to close it. The Planning Commission, excuse me, Planning Commission. And the more I looked at it, it doesn't really make any sense that we shouldn't be able to do this. So the pictures that you're seeing here, would... Mr. Parrish, you want to come up and speak to this?
Mr. Honorable Gary Parrish and Jack McHenry, the applicant.
I believe Mr. McHenry took the picture, and I'll let him describe the...
The picture you're looking at right here is at the end of 87th Street, just off Robinson. And as you can see, there's no appearance whatsoever of any kind of road being there. I've walked through this, and from past experiences, if this man wanted to put a home, homes back there, they're 500 feet from this point. The road, just to build that much of a road, would be several hundred thousand dollars. And then back in the corner of the property is a tributary for the federal government for drainage. And talking with them to cross their tributary would be, to the federal guidelines, to put in either some kind of culvert or a bridge to do that. So cost-effectively, to build a house on the other side of that fence would be very expensive for whoever wanted to develop that. And then the next picture, this is the little one-lane road from the end of 87th going back towards Robinson. Robinson's at that telephone pole there. And this road here, there used to be an old house over where my house is being built, and it was owned by a county commissioner, and they paved that little road. That road there's been there since the early 50s. And then Robinson to Walker is just a Colicci-type road from there. Because we got, we visited with, our city council several years ago with Mr. Foshee, to go from Robinson to Walker was $800,000 to put a road in. And I can't see, I can see them doing it, but I can't see the man that's off Santa Fe if you'll put the... That is the southwest corner where the, you can't see it, the picture doesn't give justice there, but that is where the federal government's tributary runs through there. And when it runs through there, it goes to the next property, and it covers over 40% of his property where it goes through there. And then there's a drain, drainage in there from that mall, strip mall back there. And over the years, somebody has been just dumping loads and loads of debris in there, concrete. And debris like that, I got out there Sunday and fell off one of them. And we go to the next picture. You can see the concrete back in there, and then go to the next picture. And there's more of the concrete, go to the next picture. And now, this is from, that stake right there you see on that corner is his property line. And the road easement is off to that side there. He's got about 170 feet to get to Santa Fe there versus to get to where he wanted to put a house was 1,200 feet to go from Robinson to where he would be. And I don't know what the city council's requirement or the planning commission would be if he'd have to go from Robinson to Santa Fe with the road. And then the next picture is the last picture. This is from Santa Fe to his house there. As you can see, the easement's been taken care of and cleaned. That would be the most cost-effective way to get into that. And there's a small community off to the north there or the left there or the right there, so it would still be going into a neighborhood from there. Because being behind the strip mall, it's isolated no matter what. And my concern is putting a house in there and plugging up the drainage. The drainage with the federal government, this strip mall that's right here, it goes across there and across at Santa Fe, and there's a field over there, an apartment complex, and it actually ends right there at the apartment complex. And then across the road, the city has put in a retention, a drainage retention place, and everything from that point goes to the south, and then everything from this point goes to the north. I guess you'd call it the continental divide of Oklahoma. But all I want to do is build a house, and I plan on retiring here in the next few years. And I just want my little corner of the world, so I can just, I'm not greedy, I just want my acre of land.
Mr. Parrish, did you have anything to add?
My only comment would be that, that I think based upon the overhead view from the, you know, going the access, that was one objection that we did have at the Planning Commission. It's clear that access from Santa Fe to this gentleman's property makes a whole lot more sense. It's direct, and it would be a whole lot less troublesome in terms of construction. And so I think that the closing of this street that's never actually been open makes sense, and that's what we're asking the council to do today, is to overrule the Planning Commission's recommendation and allow us to close the street.
Bob, did you have anything you needed to add?
I would just say that the reason the Planning Commission recommended denial was based on that protest at the time, and I think they've talked to him since, and he's withdrawn that protest.
Okay. Well, based on the fact of looking at it and the work that we've done and him withdrawing the protest, I'd actually move approval of the closure of this easement. Cast your votes, and pass unanimously. We're on to Item 8C. This is relating to, this is the changing the embezzlement charge and lowering the amount. Is that correct, Senior?
No, not actually lowering the amount, we're actually filling a void or a gap that's in there regarding the embezzlement definition.
Okay. We have a motion? Second. Cast your votes, pass unanimously. On to Item D. This is the driving improvement school and actually getting rid of that. That's correct. Cast your votes, pass unanimously. On to Item E. This is public hearing regarding dilapidated structures. Is there anybody here to speak on dilapidated structures? Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item 8F is public hearing regarding unsecured structures. Is there anybody here wanting to speak on unsecured structures? Seeing none? Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item 8G1 is the Downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated holding the 2010 Downtown in December Sandridge Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony.
Allison Schumate, Downtown Oklahoma City Incorporated. We're once again gearing up for Downtown in December, our 40-day extravaganza downtown. We have, this year we have 14 events or attractions that will run from the day after Thanksgiving till the weekend of New Year's. And this year again, we're excited to have the mayor at the Christmas tree lighting, and of course, the big guy himself, Santa, will be there to help kick off all of the festivities for the whole time. So we would just like to invite the council and their families to come out and enjoy the Christmas tree lighting the day after Thanksgiving. It's going to be at 5:30.
Did you also want to address the next one, the Santa Run?
Yes, sure. Actually, I have a handout for this one. After we submitted our revocable permit to the city, we had some concern from the Oklahoma City Police Department regarding our route. So what we're passing out now is a revised route that has been through the city and the police department. The original route went by St. Anthony's Hospital, and there was some concern about ambulances and their ability to get to the hospital during the run on the 4th. So we have submitted this revised route, and we would like that to be approved as well. Sure. Yes, we do. We're very excited this year to add OK Cityscapes to Downtown in December this year. It's the 2 million Lego display, and I think they open this weekend, and it runs through New Year's Eve as well. And it's just a really exciting new addition to Downtown in December. We're glad to have them, and once the lights on Broadway get lit up on the day after Thanksgiving, we know we're just going to pull a ton of people into that. So we hope that you all can come out and enjoy that, and as well as all the other attractions we have for this year. It's going to be a great, a great event, and we're really looking forward to it. Snow tuning again this year at the Bricktown Ballpark, ice skating at the Devon Ice Rink, the Santa Run on the 4th. We have, this year we have a costume contest, so you can come dressed up to the run and win some money for that, as well as if you're a fast runner, you can win the race. And we'll have the Devon River Parade on the 4th, and the Lights on Auto Alley, and just a ton of things. The canal boat rides are free again. We have free museums Sundays that run the whole length, and we are excited to once again have the Memorial Museum, the Banjo Museum, the Heritage Museum, and the Museum of Art being a part of them. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion on G1. Oh. Cast your votes, pass unanimously. And entertain Item on G2, and we're going to approve it as amended with the new route in place. Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item 8H is Claims Recommended for Denial. Has anybody signed up to speak on Claims Recommended for Denial? Seeing none? Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item 9A is Claims Recommended for Approval? Cast your votes, pass unanimously. Item 10 is Items from Council. The first two items, A and B, are legislative committee issues, and I could ask Gary and Pete if they'd like to comment, make any comments on this.
I might make a comment on the state legislative, I was handed this morning an addition to that concerning the problem that we had a couple of weeks ago with regard to the law about the paving district, complications in the law, and it's an effort to try to straighten that out. I haven't had a chance to really look at it yet, but I think that we picked up from the council that that's something that we wanted to address, is try to clarify that law, and so that, we're going to try to do that. I have a memo, I don't think it was passed out to everybody, I think Gary saw it before the meeting. I'm not quite sure that it does exactly what, yet exactly what we want it to do, but it's a step down that path.
There's a couple of issues on that. We'll bring that back to the legislative committee at some point in the future and add that to the agenda as appropriate. So we weren't asking for direction on that specific item this morning.
I would just add that this is, both of these came at the result of a long process that happens every year, where the city staff evaluates those issues that concern the city and changes that we might propose, both on the state and federal level. And some of them are repeats from previous years that we couldn't get through, and some of them are new. We can add to them at any time. Of course, there's a limit to when you can get bills introduced, but if the council has something that's not on there that really is of interest to them, they'll get that to Jane and the city manager's office and get it up in front of the next legislative committee meeting. But it's something we do every year, and it presses our legislative issues, both on the state and federal level.
One of the things we talked about, the legislative committee, it's something that's kind of been a pet project of mine, and we talked about it with our consultants that we hired to consult with the legislature, is that we may be asking the council to become more involved in the process. The contacts that council members have with legislators, both representing overlapping districts, could be invaluable to us as we move forward. One of the things that's been a constant kind of a concern is there really is no Oklahoma City Caucus in the legislature. There's a rural caucus and an urban caucus. Well, there's probably not an urban caucus. There's a rural caucus and a Liberty Caucus. I mean, there's a caucus for every special interest you can think of, but there's not an Oklahoma City Caucus, a group that comes together and consults with Oklahoma City as to what we need. And so one of the things we thought we might try is to try more personal interface between people that sit around this horseshoe and the legislators, to try to make sure they have a better understanding of why we need certain things that we're asking for. So we may be, the legislative committee may be calling on individual council members to talk, to try to determine which members of the House or the Senate you have that you know personally, to try to help us make sure we get the information out. We think a lot of times we don't get our program done because our legislators don't understand the importance to the city of it. We think maybe that possibly we haven't done as good a job of explaining it to the people that have to vote for it that way up too. So there's some interesting things on it this year. There's going to be an effort, we're joining the Oklahoma Municipal League in their effort to try to get control of tobacco regulation, let cities control tobacco. Some cities have gone ahead and passed tobacco legislation, even though there's an exemption for, that prevents that in state law. Some cities have banned tobacco use on a broader basis than the state law permits. But, you know, since tobacco use continues to be the number-one public health problem in the country, and we've put such an emphasis really on health and losing weight and all the different things we've done from a healthy standpoint, it seems to me logical that we'd want to try to take advantage of OML's efforts to try to permit us to regulate the use of tobacco a little bit more. The age that people can buy it, how close they can locate to a school. You know, most of us don't know, I think, that tobacco is exempt from state sales tax. When you think about that, how does that happen? How do you exempt something like tobacco from state sales tax? I mean, what's the logic in that? So it may be not an easy deal. There are going to be a lot of people that don't like it. I mean, people that make a lot of money pushing tobacco are going to be opposed to it. But it's OML's trying to do it, and so we're just joining OML's effort to do that.
Are there any other comments or questions on legislative issues?
Yeah, I have a question on this clarification of housing regulations for sex offenders and the out-of-state sex offenders to provide certified copy of their offender's judgment. I'm trying to get some understanding in reference to Number 3, where the dwelling issue of where sex offenders can reside.
I think you can look at that on two... You want to respond to this, Gary?
I think Chief City can come in a minute and maybe explain that better than us. There's a, there have been some instances where there's been splitting of trailers for sex offenders, and it's really an attempt to try to address that issue. We've got a trailer park that, where sex offenders are not supposed to be in the same dwelling unit. There's been a curtain put in a trailer, and that's been determined to be a separate facility, and so we're trying to get clarification regarding that specific issue. As I'm...
You want to respond to this, Gary?
I think Chief City can come in a minute and maybe explain that better than us. There have been some instances where there's been splitting of trailers for sex offenders, and it's really an attempt to try to address that issue. We've got a trailer park that where sex offenders are not supposed to be in the same dwelling unit. There's been a curtain put in a trailer, and that's been determined to be a separate facility, and so we're trying to get clarification regarding that specific issue, as I'm waiting for Chief City to come in and bail me out on this one.
I think there's a couple of different things. You asked about the registration, the certified copy of...
Well, they have them separated. Number three is the housing, which is -- that was the first one that came to my mind, is relates to this individual dwelling.
It has to do, as they said, it has to do with the definition of what a single unit is, because they can -- we've had some instances where they'll take like a trailer house and put up a wall or a barrier of some kind and call that two or three or four different residences when each one of them doesn't have the ability to live separately. They won't have separate kitchens, won't have separate bathrooms. They're getting by by saying, well, the wall means that that bed, that's a separate unit therefore residing, so they can put multiple numbers in a unit, which most people would define as a single dwelling unit. So it has to do with the definition of what that is, more than anything. It's not trying to limit where they can reside in the city. It has to do with the definition of a structure.
Number three is purely an enforcement deal. The laws that's fairly written in the situation we're talking about is unenforceable. They just can't enforce that law.
Question again?
Well, Councilman Kelly brought up the two legislative issues we have on sex offenders. One of them is the housing unit issue, and the other one is the bringing in their copy of their records, certified copy of their records.
This undefined term, what is the undefined term?
The undefined, in the state law, in the state law, it says that a registered or non-sex offender has to live in a single dwelling, but it doesn't define a single dwelling. It says they can't live in a multi-housing type dwelling. Well, you have some facilities that we have where maybe a trailer has been divided in half. A single dwelling has been -- a partition's been put up and divided in half, where you have restroom facilities on one side and a kitchen facility on the other, and they have to intermingle as a result of that. So it's not -- it's to circumvent the single dwelling issue that's laid out by state law. Well, state law does not define a single dwelling unit, and all we're asking for is a definition of that, to clarify that a single dwelling would have a bathroom, a kitchen, and all of the types of things a single dwelling should have. That's all we're asking for, because now we have people circumventing. We have some circumventing that law by using a single dwelling and splitting it with a partition and saying it's a single dwelling.
So it wouldn't prohibit someone from living in an apartment complex?
No. No. It'd still be, I mean, because it's still, a single dwelling would basically be defined as having a bathroom and a kitchen and normal things that a single dwelling would have.
And the other one, Chief's issue here, it's the same issue, but it's the certified copy of the JNS?
Correct. What we're having, what detectives are having a problem with, when they do follow-ups and they file charges on somebody that hasn't registered or hasn't complied with the law, well, when you take that with a person that's living here from out of state, which is allowed to move into our state as a registered sex offender now, any adjudication that has been made, say, from California or someplace like that, they're having a very difficult time for the purpose of prosecution, getting that adjudication, you know, the information on that. And all we're asking for, and in some cases, the states don't even send it, won't even send it, so what we're asking, because they can get it themselves, a sex offender can actually obtain that, we're asking them to provide documentation of that adjudication at the time that they register so that we'll have that. And it primarily pertains to those from out of state.
Well, would it be easier, Chief, if, because all these individuals are on probation, so consequently, if they're transferring from another state, their probation has to transfer to the state of Oklahoma, as a precondition of their case being transferred here, wouldn't they have to require, couldn't you just require that prior to their transfer being accepted by the Department of Corrections, that they have included in their transfer packet a copy of the JNS?
Well, they may get some of that if they are on probation and transferred, but the majority of our sex offenders are longer on probation. Majority of the sex offenders that move from state to state, I mean, we've got sex offenders that have to register the rest of their life, and their probation may have run out, you know, years and years and years ago, so that moved to the state, within the state, but then they don't follow the state laws or the federal laws of having to register. And we don't, just all I know is what the detectives are saying is they can't get that in a lot of cases. They're having a difficult time getting that, and it would be very simple for that person, that person that's registering, to obtain that and provide that at the time of registration.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions or comments? Entertained motion on 10A. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. And item 10B. Cast your votes. Pass unanimously. Onto items from council, I'll ask Councilman Pat Ryan to get us started, please. Skip?
Just briefly, I wanted to mention that Sam and I had the privilege Friday afternoon of attending an event in the Paseo, which was great. It was an early part of the Oklahoma Creativity Forum, and it was a recognition of a partnership between the Paseo artists and Edgemere Elementary School and Harding High School. The Harding students painted a fabulous mural in the district, and the Edgemere students did a photography project, and have actually gone as far as publish a book of these photographs that are extremely moving. And I just wanted to recognize, I guess, how important it is for neighborhoods to collaborate with their local schools, and how important it is for our schools to be able to offer arts education programming, particularly in this difficult time. And just one other quick thing, Vice Mayor, if I could. Thursday evening was the Good Neighbor Awards. I was unable to attend because it was the same night as the Hall of Fame. We need to work on scheduling of those two events, but I did want to recognize the Miller Neighborhood for the Best Newsletter Award, and the Good Neighbor Award this year was given to Jenna Daniel from the River Park Neighborhood. Congratulate both of them and all the other winners. Thank you.
Pete?
Nothing.
Well, I'll take that, all the other winners. I wasn't going to say anything, but the Windsor Hills neighborhood was recognized as the best neighborhood for the year by the Neighborhood Alliance. And then the Windsor Hills Patrol, which has been going on since 1989, was recognized as the best project for the year, and Walt Spencer and Myra Woodside were singled out. My congratulations to them, which leads me to just another update, if I could. Last night, the second meeting chaired by Ben Davis from the Planning Department on strengthening neighborhood, strong neighborhood initiative, was held under the support of the WAN group, which is a consortium of neighborhoods out in northwest Oklahoma City, Windsor Forest, Windsor Oaks, Meridian Hills, and Windsor Hills. And they continue to plan, and they're having a third meeting scheduled for the first Tuesday in December. That initiative, along with what's going on in the Friends of Northwest Penn Street, a companion planning effort, is really an example of the follow-up of what you saw this morning with the Paseo neighborhood, trying to create an environment whereby these neighborhoods will be able to be recognized in years ahead as being a strong neighborhood and a vital asset to the Oklahoma City community. In conjunction with that, the Windsor Area Business Group, which has come as a springboard off of the WAN group, which is made up of businesses along the Northwest 23rd Corridor, where a streetscape has already started with engineering work, the Windsor Area Business Group will be holding a networking session Monday night at 5:30 at the Windsor Boeing Alley, and another session at 8:30 Wednesday evening of next week, to try to energize the businesses along there, to follow really the lead that Sam's award and what's happened along Western Avenue. So I'd encourage all the neighbors and the businesses that are in these affected areas to get involved and to move our city forward. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. City manager, just a small street project that somehow won't go away. 23rd and Pennsylvania. Just west of the intersection is a probably six-foot-square concrete-replaced decking with barricades, four barricades around it, and it has for six weeks now been narrowing three lanes down to one, and that's also a bus stop right there. And at rush hour time, it's just not a happy place. I don't know why we haven't had an access. And I've tried, Jim, there's something about it I just don't understand.
I'll bet you we get somebody out there this morning to take a look at that.
Just to echo a little bit about the Neighborhood Alliance Awards the other night, Police Sergeant Charles Epple received the big award of the night, works out of the Hefner Division, and I, you know, accolade to him. I can't, I characterize it as it'd be hard to define how many crimes have not happened because of Charles's work with the neighborhood. He's been the go-to guy for neighborhoods for a long time out there when they want to know how to set up patrols, how to make their neighborhoods safer, how to make their homes safer individually and so forth. And so I'll just give accolades to Charles Epple for that award. Well deserved.
Next item is item 11. City manager, please?
Several reports this morning, Mr. Vice Mayor. A couple I want to highlight. First of all, the Neighborhood Science Week quarterly report, that was kind of initiative of council to go ahead and get some folks involved in that process, and it amazes me that the numbers seem to be going up each quarter, how our Friends and Neighborhoods are going out and helping us with that issue. I'm going to skip over the, well, I'll hit the residential fire sprinkler systems. That was a report requested by some council members a while ago. I know that Councilman Morris has extreme interest in that specific issue and probably has some thoughts to share. Mr. Ryan does also, and I assume we have some friends from the development community here that are here to comment on that issue also. And we didn't make a recommendation, we're just providing information as to what we view as trends in the issue right, or trends in the area right now, what some of the costs are, what some of the insurance benefits are, and some of the issues that are out there regarding that issue. That issue really will be addressed later as we consider the adoption of the International Residential Code, and that will probably be adopted possibly by the state this spring. And so that will set the stage a little bit. If they adopt it with the residential fire sprinkler requirement in as part of the code, then it becomes a moot issue, and we will have to adopt it with that, because we cannot adopt a code less stringent than what the state has. If the state chooses not to put that provision in the code, then the council would have, be able to have that as a policy discussion at some time in the future. Housing loan program, several months ago, there were a number of loan programs within the city. We've had several loan programs. We had some foreclosures, and council asked the status of the foreclosure process, and so we did an update on that issue. And then also, the Jail State Cost Recovery Program is an issue that we put into place a few years ago. It's generated nearly $2 million over the life of the program, and Stacy Davis, our court administrator, is here this morning to answer any questions you may have in regard to that program and/or report. And with that, I know we have some citizens signed up to speak.
We do, and I'll ask Mr. Mike Means to come up, and he's going to speak on item 11C. And then, Mr. Keefe, you can come up as well and speak after.
Good morning, councilors. Thank you for the opportunity. I just really wanted to echo what the city manager, Mr. Couch, had to say. As the executive officer for the State Association, I'm very involved in the legislative process, and I just wanted to reaffirm and echo what Jim was saying, is that last year, or actually two years ago, the state finally adopted a Uniform Building Code Commission to develop for the first time ever a statewide residential building code. There has not been, despite misconceptions, there is not a statewide residential building code in the state of Oklahoma, and we felt that it would be very beneficial to our members, no matter what jurisdiction you're working in, to be able to have a common code to work from. And that was able to be implemented, this code commission, through the efforts of the construction industry, through the Oklahoma Municipal League, so many different groups coming together, recognizing the need to have this code. And of course, right now, they are considering, and the first code they're looking at is the residential building code, and they are looking to start with a base of the International Residential Code 2009, which does include the fire sprinkler issue as part of the code. Now, I know they're looking at trying to adopt a minimum base code, and so we don't know what the process or what the actual outcome will be of that. I was just going to make the council aware that this probably won't happen until by February. They do have to have something in place by February to be able to submit it to the legislature for approval, and so we're just wanting to let the council know that this is already being considered, that we would advise, from the State Association, advise the council to just wait, take a wait-and-see approach to decide what you need to do following that. I do know that they are looking at why 26 states have had already or are considering prohibiting a mandate of fire sprinklers, and so I want you to be aware that that is what's taking place across the country as well, that with this mood of government mandates being recognized, that's probably not the best thing in the world, that it should be a free enterprise option, and it should be a consumer choice. We wanted to bring that to the council's attention as well. With that, I'll let Mr. Keefe.
Mr. Means, could you, I made a mistake. Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Mike Means, and I'm the executive vice president for the Oklahoma State Home Builders Association. Thank you.
Did I understand that you, are you not supporting the code, the international?
We, as an association, we are supporting the adoption of the IRC 2009 with some specific amendments, and one of those would be to prohibit the mandation of fire sprinklers, that it should be a consumer option. I will make note that one of the great recognitions that was given to the Paseo Award was affordable housing. When you start adding mandate upon mandate, you take away the affordability of housing, especially as you get into smaller and smaller houses.
Well, just, so your amendment would be that the fire sprinkler systems could not, should not be mandated by legislative...
Right. Should not be mandated by the state. Now, obviously, if it's not mandated by the state, then that makes it a city-by-city option. So, I mean, if the city of Oklahoma City wants to mandate it, that would be their option. They're asking to not be adopted on a statewide level, because there are going to be, obviously, there'll be a ton of communities that have no ability to inspect, have no licensed professionals to install, they won't have the water capacity. I mean, there are tons of issues that are involved, besides just what takes place in the house, as far as just the infrastructure. And so when you're looking at a minimum statewide code, there are probably certain things that should not be included, and then be left up to, obviously, cities to consider whether they want to make the code more stringent. That was one thing City Manager Couch said, was that once a code is adopted, a city cannot make it less restrictive, but a city can make it more restrictive. And I was just giving you a perspective of what we're looking at from a state perspective.
Mr. Means, do you then take exception with the findings that enactment of a sprinkler ordinance does not cause any detrimental effects on supply or cost, housing supply or cost?
Yes, sir, I would. I have, and I have, I saw the report yesterday myself.
This isn't the first time we've been provided this. I remember sitting on a housing committee three years ago, and the same evidence was debated and provided, and seeing it again supported three years later. It does not.
I know Mr. Keefe would like to offer an additional suggestion to the city council, which would be for us to be able to also submit some statistics and some reports from our industry as well, but I'll let Mr. Keefe speak to that. Thank you.
Mr. Keefe, could you give your name and address for the record, please?
My name is John Keefe, and I am the government affairs liaison for the Central Oklahoma Home Builders Association. We are an association of approximately 1,000 members, consisting of developers, builders, and associates. We cover 10 counties, most of which are in central Oklahoma and do include Oklahoma County. I'm here today to primarily address the study... I'm here today to primarily address the study that was conducted by the city. We have only had access to it this weekend. We've not had time to study it in detail. And as Mr. Means said, my primary purpose here is to ask that before the council gives serious consideration to adoption of the content of this report, that we, as a home building industry, have an opportunity to provide input as well. In briefly reviewing the report, I found some things that caused me to additionally want to add information. I think we're going to have some possible differences in what we perceive as the cost of installation. In this particular report, the maintenance issue, they use an average timeframe of 2.8 years, which I feel like to make a, to use their terminology, the time used in the study of living in a home with a residential fire sprinkler system does not provide a long timeframe to determine the rate of problems with this type of system. That was the conclusion of this report. Under the insurance, I think there's insufficient data. Quoting from the report, insufficient data was received to draw conclusions about the savings overall. In only three homes provided the actual annual premium savings, and only one of those might offset the entire cost of the system. Also in this report, it excluded any consideration given to the difference in life and property loss comparing residential sprinkler systems to a hardwired smoke alarm system with a battery backup. And we think that it would be beneficial if, before the council gave serious consideration to mandating sprinkler systems, that the home building industry had an opportunity to provide to the council. We have access to information at a national and state level that I think would be very applicable to the situation here in Oklahoma City.
Jim, we've had additions, new additions built where the developer has opted to put in sprinkler systems throughout.
There's limited information, but there is numbers of that. That's what the report's based upon, yes, sir.
Are none of those go back further than two or three years?
Bob, can you address that?
Well, there are some that were done prior to this. What we tried to do in this study was, we had a subdivision that we could compare like lots. One section had a requirement for sprinkler systems, one didn't. And they were the same developer, similar lots. That's why we targeted this. And we could go out and do a survey of the other, and we could identify the ones that have sprinkler systems and do a survey of those.
With a longer history.
Right, but we did it for this subdivision because we could compare the lots.
Well, I'm tempted not to even jump into this at this time because it's going to, there's going to be a lot of discussion on this later. And I've got some friends sitting in the audience, and I hope when the gavel strikes later on, they're all friends when we walk out of here. But I've had one for 17 years now in my house, put one in when I built my house. And I certainly recouped the cost of it in my insurance savings. I have not had a maintenance problem, I have not had a leak. The arguments are going to come, and I don't care whether they come from the locals, the state level, the State Home Builders Association, if they come from a national group, the arguments are going to be about cost. Nobody wants to argue life safety. And if you want to, if you want to go back through the residential fire codes, commercial fire codes, if you want to look at the number of things that have changed in the last 10, 20, 30, 40 years around the fire code, it all has to do with life safety. There's proven things that have happened that when you do it, you cut down the risk of losing somebody's life in a fire. And I'll say it again, and I don't, the chief's not in here, but I can't speak for the time I've been gone from being fire chief, but I can tell you, I don't know of a documented fire death in the United States from a building that was covered by a fully functional fire sprinkler system. You just don't have them. That's why they're there. Got nothing, I shouldn't say it's got nothing to do, it has a lot to do with the cost of it, it has a lot to do with the maintenance of it and everything else, but the fact remains, you save lives with them. So, the argument is going to be both on the local and the state and the national level, the argument's going to be about the cost. And how many things have you had to do, even in homes? I know, so there's some other home builders sitting out there can probably remember, it's been so, they've come in to the point where you just take them as standard now, but things like putting the water heaters up on stands, the things like wiring, the things like sheet rock thickness that have to do with fire safety, the separation that you have to have in buildings, the things that you can't put inside homes anymore. There's a whole myriad of things that have come about in the home building industry because they were proven that if you didn't do it anymore, you'd decrease the risk of losing your life to fire. So, residential sprinklers has been an argument out there for years. Some communities put them in from, almost from the very beginning. Scottsdale has always been thrown up as the community of kind of the pedestal because they, very early in Scottsdale's history, they mandated residential fire sprinklers, and they have them in every home out there. And so it's, and I know that, like, as I said, when this comes up after the state deals with it, and if we deal with it here, it's going to come up again, there's going to be a lot of discussion going on about it, but I just had to get in here and say that you've got to deal with the fact that you can save lives with them at the same time as you deal with the cost of them. And you, when you look at, because a lot of this data had to do with, in fact, all of it, almost had to do with cost, cost to put it in, cost to maintain it, whether your insurance premiums went up or down. So, again, I know there'll be a lot of discussions later on, and I would just caution everybody and hope that everybody understands that sometimes these things occur because it's a way to save lives. And if you think about the city ordinances, and you think about the city policies, and you think about the codes that we adapt, there's a lot of things that we do not related to fire, that they're there because they're life safety issues. And sometimes it's not palatable to the people that are involved, but they're done anyway because they are a proven life safety issue. So, I'll leave it at that.
I guess I'll just make one comment, and I'm not sure I want to wade into this discussion either right now, but I thought something that Mike Means said was pretty impactful
to me, and that is, we're not just talking about costs related to the individual homeowner installing a system, but we're going to be talking about a significant cost to the city related to infrastructure issues, how you get the water pressure high enough to deal with a sprinkler system. We're, you know, we've got problems in northwest Oklahoma City right now for showers. We're going to have some real challenges dealing with sprinkler systems. So, I think it's a larger consideration than just the cost to the individual homeowner that we're looking at.
We agree, it's a very emotional issue, it's a very cost-driven issue, and that is why there is so much at stake here, that we think the more comprehensive approach we can take to this, which includes many points of view, would be in everybody's best interest. I had the privilege this spring of serving on the Oklahoma City Appearance Standards Neighborhood Streets Committee for about six months, and I liked the approach. The approach was, city staff set the meetings, they included members of the industries, individuals, participants. There were numerous points of view, and we came to conclusions that embraced all opinions. And I would suggest that, prior to making a final decision on this, that if this approach is not taken where it's opened up to all the public, that at least the council agree that you will consider information that we can provide to you along with the results of this report. And I would be remiss if I did not introduce those with me today. We have with us today Mr. Mark Dale, our Central Home Builders President, Mr. Kurt Dennis, our Vice President Treasurer, Terry Akers, our Executive Officer, and Jim Schuff, our First Vice President, who will succeed Mark next year. That's all I have.
Thanks. I would just like to make a couple of comments. If you look at the insurance issue in this report, there is actually no cost recovery. It actually does cost you out of pocket once you amortize the cost over the 30 years. The other thing is, is the saving of lives. When this was originally brought up a couple of years ago, I actually asked the Fire Department to look into the loss of life in the structures. And what they reported was that the reason why there was such a jump back and forth in the percentage of fire deaths, you know, 100% increase one year, whatever it might be, is because we had virtually no deaths. There might be two, and the next year there's four, so now you have 100% increase in the death rate. But when you looked at the structures that those people perished in, which is sad in and of itself, it wasn't in structures that were 20 years old or newer. There was, it's 50-year-old structures, 40-year-old structures. So, you can always talk about saving lives, but there is a cost to it. Insurance companies do it all the time, and that's probably why you don't see a very high cost, very much of a difference in the cost of the insurance, is because they realize that there's not, there's not a reduced, that much of a reduced risk in the insurance itself in the loss of life. So, I think that we'll have plenty of time to talk about this, but I'm not so sure it's as emotional as we want to make it out to be.
Thank you.
We do have a citizen, we do have a citizen signed up, Mr. John Foreman. Mr. Foreman, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please. And please, I limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is John Foreman. I reside at 936 Southwest 25th in beautiful Capitol Hill. And I'm here because I have questions concerning ward boundaries. How are they drawn up, and when are they drawn up? Is that based on census? Is that coming up soon?
I can respond to that if you'd like. The boundaries are redrawn every 10 years based upon census numbers, and that census data should probably be available in the spring.
Okay, and you guys decide the boundaries, does the council?
The council decides the boundaries.
Okay, would you guys consider maybe creating an inner-city south side ward? I'm served by Meg Sayer, she's a wonderful counselor, and, but she lives in a very different area than I do. And she's a great person, but I don't think someone who lives north of the river has, you know, the same priorities and concerns that, you know, the people who live in my neighborhood do. So, Capitol Hill, the central area, is divided amongst several wards, and I think it needs to be, you know, included in one. And it's, that issue is highlighted, especially when you guys decided to raise water utilities. I mean, for someone who has a limited income or is very poor, $5 is a huge thing. I mean, when a dollar is separating them from, you know, $30 overdraft fee, stuff like that, I mean, it takes months to recover from that. So, I think if there was an inner-city or more inner-city wards, you know, it wouldn't make a difference because you guys voted overwhelmingly to pass the rate increase. But just so that we feel that our voice is being heard, and that's one thing I think that's lacking in all these major decisions, whether it's the Devon, you know, campus, what you guys, what used to be called the Mary Gardens, and the, you know, Project 180, Maps 3, stuff like that, people just don't feel like their voice is being heard. And I think, you know, creating an inner-city ward would go a long way in alleviating that sense of frustration and, you know, stuff like that. So, I would ask that you seriously consider doing that.
I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, we need to go to 10 wards. We do not, we can't, there's no way to create an inner-city ward like you're talking about without expanding the total number of council members. I've been looking at it for 20 years, and there's only one way to do it, and that is to go to 10 wards. I agree, this is the opportunity to do it. I hate it that you chose to bring up that if a ward was created in South Oklahoma City to be opposed to everything that we've done over the last 10 years, but I would, I mean, that doesn't help your cause, I can tell you. But I do say this, that that whole area, not just the portion of South Oklahoma City and Meg Ward, but there's a portion of it in my ward, there's a portion of it in Larry's ward, there's a big part of it in Skip's ward, there's some of it in Brian's ward, that is not represented any longer. And I believe that a ward south of the river that was from Hy to May, and just go south along until you get the 10th of the city's population would be, I think it would be a very diverse ward, and so there'd be, that there are opportunities for more diversity on this horseshoe would arise from that, and I think it's a good idea. If I were you, I'd come back or have somebody come back every Tuesday between now and the time we, and each one of you contact your council member and explain to them why it's a good deal, but I would probably advise you not to say that we would be against everything that we've been doing.
Well, it's not about?
No, I understand, no, I know. I grew up out there, I, that's, my heart is in Capitol, I've got a little sticker in my, in my office, although I don't represent 25th Street anymore, it says, "My heart's in Capitol Hill," and I believe that. But until we get, until we look at drawing the wards more sensitively, rather than just making sure we got eight, an eighth of the population in the city in each one, until we start looking at those kind of things, I think we miss something. And I couldn't agree with you more, except as I've pointed out three times now, which I'm famous for, but that's, but I would, you need to find other people that think that, you need to start, write a letter to the editor. I mean, I don't know whether I'd be able to convince five people up here to do that, but you can.
Well, there is a feeling of frustration of not being heard in these projects. And you guys could build websites and say, oh, the citizens have contributed, but until there are people here speaking out, until there are councilors meeting with the people, I've tried to meet with several people, and I've been thrown a PR person, Laura Story, has a beautiful last name for what she does, but she's been great, she's wonderful, she needs a raise, she's really good, very real, but I want to meet with, you know, councilors and stuff like that. And I, people need their voice heard, or just, they write it off and become embittered or frustrated and stuff like that. And I think that would, I mean, it would be a first step, you know.
I want to make sure you have my phone number because I don't believe you've ever called me.
Oh, I've just come here, and it's been about the Project 180, so I think they...
297-2402.
I will. You've been a great counselor, it's nothing, I'm just, you know.
Well, please come talk to me.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming down.
Vice Mayor, I think it's more than a mega issue too, and most of us have had this discussion with Pete, can't not help it. And I'd like to hear on the record, Pete, it's always made sense to me to go south and not just Ward 6 with an additional ward, due to the difference in representation in the wards south, the inner-city and the rest of the parts of the ward, but I've yet to understand why it needs to go to 10 wards. I mean, if we were going to expand, population may dictate it on its merits itself, the population increase.
You have to have an odd number of votes.
It just doesn't work out. With eight, just you can't draw the lines in such a way that it works out.
You can't draw the line?
No, I mean, you just can't draw, you can't, well, I guess you could probably draw the word I'm talking about, but it would, it would create a situation where, for example, I don't think you could. I've tried to do it. You're going to have three, well, I don't know, maybe it's possible, I'll say, I don't know. I just, I don't, I do think that that ward needs to be there because I think it has a unique situation that is not represented, and I don't take this personally, because I represent a piece of it myself, and Skip represents a piece, and Larry does. I'm not talking about, we don't do what we're required to do, but it doesn't have the character, the integrity of an area that is represented. I just don't think it does. And I think it, more than any part of Oklahoma City, has lost its sense of identity because of that. You call what was one time considered Capitol Hill is now part of five separate wards. You can't name me another community in the city that has been treated that way. Not one, not one, not one.
Pete, perhaps instead of more wards, we just need to do a better job of selecting the ward boundaries.
That's possible. I'm a little skeptical.
Well, but I'm skeptical of adding additional wards, because where do you draw the line? Each ward in the city has different characteristics to go across a ward. The people who live in certain parts of my ward have nothing in common with Gallardia. And I think that's true of every ward, we have differences, and if we draw lines so close to represent each interest in a ward, we're going to have hundreds of wards. close representing each interest in a ward, we're gonna have hundreds of wards.
But they have much more, they have much more in common than the people that are in Passo do with the people on 25th Street.
I would suggest that's probably not right.
Yeah, I doubt that.
Well, you doubt a lot of things, Pete, so I'm not.
But I just, I don't know, you can. Let me go back to my first premise. My first premise is, no other community in this city has been divided up into five wards, no other. It's just not, hadn't happened.
Well, but that does, but more wards may not be the best solution.
Well, I'm saying I'd be willing to look at that. But come to, to say that Galardia is out of place and ought to have its own ward is just taking me down the path I'm not gonna go.
No, no, I didn't say that. I said there are differences within the wards. We need to recognize those differences and be responsive to them, but we, I don't think.
Put them in the same ward with 25th Street, and then see how they, and then see how each side feels.
Pete, just for a second, think about.
That's what we've done, in effect.
Pete, just for a second, think about if you had the same philosophy, you looked at state wards or congressional districts, they represent a variety of interests regardless.
No, but they're gerrymandered.
That's unavoidable.
You may, Pat, you may be right. I'm willing to accept your premise that we ought to try to do that, I'm willing to accept that. But the ward lines, city council lines, state representative lines, federal representative lines are all gerrymandered based on politics, and our wards are gerrymandered based on politics. They are, they were last time, and I just don't want us to do that. If we can draw one that'll preserve Capitol Hill, I'm gonna be a happy camper.
Well, I think that's a better solution than increasing the number of wards.
I've just looked at it for a long time, and I'm, I'm just almost convinced that it can't be done well without expanding the total number of wards. But I'm willing to let you look at it and come to it.
Why don't we leave this for another day? I think we've said it.
This is great, Joe.
Well, no, that's what, this is what democracy's all about, it's just being, it's done out loud on television, that's what democracy's all about. But I, I have, this is my concern, when I look at what's going to happen this, next year, my ward is gonna get even larger. It's now 160 square miles or something. It's going to get larger. It's not gonna get smaller. It's the largest ward in the city, it's gonna get larger. Some of these, and that's gonna make it even more difficult. Where am I gonna go? I can't go east anymore, so what I'm gonna do is take in more and more of an area that will lose its, it will lose its identity as I move west because it's gonna be associated with a rural park. So, I'm saying that we could, that part could be fixed. I think Larry's ward's gonna be the same way. His ward is likely, his ward is probably likely to stay the same. Brian's is gonna get smaller. It's gonna get smaller, it's gonna be even smaller. It's already the smallest ward in the city, and it's gonna get smaller. And so, what we're doing is we're making it more and more and more compact, more and more representative of one viewpoint, and all the others are then handling all the diversity. And I just think there's not a better way to do it. Skip's ward, the second largest ward, I believe, or is yours the second large? No, I don't know, I don't know which is which, one of the two is. Skip's ward's gonna get bigger, Skip's ward's gonna get bigger also, and it's gonna, that, I just don't think that's a way to do it. There's two extra seats here, especially if you stuck a little space on the end there, and I don't think there's any harm in spreading democracy out to two more people. I just, I just think that's a better solution, but I'm willing to listen.
I'm willing to discuss it.
Okay.
Skip, you wanna chime in? Meg, anybody?
Well, I, sorry. No, but I think the person made a good point in some respect about some of the issues of identity in some of the communities. We just saw the Passo, and you know that that's all part of cultural identification to a neighborhood compact area, that when you look at some of the parts of Oklahoma City, it's very obvious that, I've always questioned why, why we don't even have at least an at-large council person, you know? And I think in a lot of cities that I have had opportunity to discuss and listen to their council roles, that when you have that at-large person, that it tends to address those issues that was addressed by the citizen this, you know, a few minutes ago. And so, I don't know how we do it, but I think there is some merit to it, and I think that it's something that we probably should be very concerned about as we look at the drawing of the boundaries as we go forth with the new redistricting of the council. But, you know, I just think that if we really are true about representation of everybody in this city, I don't think none of us can say that there is not pockets in this city that don't really get a full, and I'm saying, they don't even get a full attention as it relates to services. You know, I have a part of a district, I have part of my ward that's far northeast, and it butts right on the line of Spencer and Oklahoma City, and I have to admit that there is some legitimate complaints about citizens as it relates to the services, and the first thing that's gonna come up is that they're gonna look at the number of houses, and say, "Well, you don't have a lot of traffic, so your road will never get repaired." And these are the kind of issues that individuals who are citizens, who do all the things that they're supposed to do, that those are the responses that they get, and I think it's just part of an oversight that we look at the more compact areas and those individuals who are living in some of these areas that has been genderfied and people have moved out, and there's still people who maintain their residence there, they sometimes get left out of the equation.
Just one last comment on Skip's. You know, as we become a city and struggle as a city to become more diversified and take pride in that diversification, I mean, specifically, the Hispanic population, Skip, without saying it, is a section of the city, a portion of the city, that just is just, I just don't think we do justice by not making that part of the equation, that opportunity, and to be so proud and talk about a diversification. And I'd like to see what Pat's suggestion, I'd like to see if that could be accomplished within our existing eight wards first. But I think more specifically than what the young man had to say, that the diversification of this city and the representation on this body, we're gonna continue to tie it and be proud of it, ought to provide a better opportunity for that diversification.
One more comment about why go to 10. It goes to something that I said earlier, and that is that the ward lines haven't been historically drawn based on politics. The number one political reason for not doing it is you don't ever want to throw two councilmen into the same ward after redistricting. I didn't say that a while ago, but that's the main reason that it's very, very difficult to go with eight and create this ward that this young man's talking about and that I support. Because once you do that, then you start to push others into, now, and one of the reasons I think it might be possible to do it this year is we're probably not all gonna run again. There's four seats open, and there may be a possibility that one or two or more of us may not seek reelection. So, that's a time that redrawing those ward lines might be easier politically, that's just getting it right out here on the table. I mean, that's, we may not want to talk about that, but in all the redistrictings, historically, they've never thrown two council members into the same district. So, that's your number one criteria when you start redistricting. It's not, it is not what's the right thing to do for the community, it's what's the right thing to do for the nine, for eight of us that sit around this horseshoe. And I think that the only way to avoid that is to go to 10 wards, and then you wouldn't have to worry about that.
Let me take the last comment on this topic. No, so this is the last comment. You know, if we're up here and some of the criticism we had was an area of town being left out of being represented, that there was, you know, four districts in Capitol Hill. You know, the other side of the coin is, is maybe Capitol Hill should be the best representative, they have four council people that represent them, and maybe if they're not being represented, maybe it's more incriminating on the nine of us that sit around this horseshoe than it really is about the lines. Maybe we ought to take a look at the way we represent our citizens better, and I think that, I mean, I'd be willing to criticize myself on sometimes, sometimes you can overlook areas because they're not as vocal, but maybe the criticism lies with us and not necessarily where the lines are. So.
Your turn.